The record.
Call this Township Council's Special Meeting of August 16th, 2021 to order. The agenda of this special meeting, to the extent known, is as follows. The 2021 Parsippany Trail's municipal budget. Formal action may or may not be taken. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building and on the Municipal Website on August 10th, 2021, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on August 13th, 2021, and copies of this notice was transmitted to the Daily Record on August 10th, 2021, and faxed to the Star Ledger and various other newspapers and local radio stations on August 10th, 2021. Would you all join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Karipi?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Here.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson is excused. Mr. DePiro?
Here.
Okay, others present. Mayor Soriano is excused. We have Township Attorney Jim Lot, District Administrator Fred Carr, CFO Juan Arribay, and Township Clerk Caleb Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. First, I would entertain a motion to open to the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karipi, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call. Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public. Come up, Bob, if you'd like. It's okay. We'll get a pen for you. I know who you are.
Um, Bob Venedzi, 102 Brook Lawn Drive. If you're gonna cover this, let me know. And, you know, I just wanna know what happened with your meeting last Wednesday with the state. So, you know, if you're gonna report on that, then...
Didn't have it.
Didn't have it?
Didn't have to go.
Oh, well, then, I'm done.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks for coming by.
Would you like to say why the reason why it didn't come?
Well, the reason it didn't happen was because we did introduce the budget. They held our feet to the fire. We had to hold a special meeting to introduce the budget, even though we only had it for two weeks. We being the council. That left one topic that defines. Mr. Lot, you wanna address that?
Yes, Council President. We did receive confirmation that the council was excused from attending last Wednesday's local finance board meeting. As to fines, the Division has not made a decision as to whether or not there will be any fines at this time.
Okay.
I think they are awaiting the adoption of the budget.
Okay. Anyone else in the public wish to speak? Maybe we can just call up our township auditor.
For those who don't know me, I'm Valerie Dolan. I'm Nissavatia, the Township Auditor. I just have a quick statement that I wanted to read to you while you were starting your discussion regarding the budget. That the 2021 budget has been reviewed and certified by Nissavatia. The budget that was introduced on 8/9 was a balanced budget and was within both the state mandated levy and appropriation caps. However, I do wanna give you a couple of pointers that I'd like to point out. The sustainability of this budget should be a concern for the township and for future budgets that you'll be building. This '21 budget includes several non-recurring revenues, which means those funds will not be available to the township when preparing the '22 budget. The township at this point should keep a watchful eye on all of the revenues that have been anticipated and possibly prepare for any shortfalls that might come during, on the revenues during 2021 as the continued effects of the pandemic are felt. The township should also carefully continue to monitor your budget expenditures for the remainder of the year, which would then give you the ability to afford the flexibility by the state to possibly cancel any unspent appropriations to offset any shortfalls of revenue should they occur. While I know this year was a lengthy and difficult process, the difficulties will continue for you during, into the '22 budget, and it would be in the best interests of the township and the council to start beginning work now on your '22 budget to assure that the process will address areas of concern and also make sure that you can, in the future, meet any timelines set by the Division of Local Government Services so you don't run into future problems and potential fines that you are facing possibly this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to close to the public.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karipi, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call. Mr. Karipi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Okay, we can start our questions.
I've got a little hazard here.
It's okay, continue. I'm all right.
Okay, Janice, you wanna start? I understand you have some of Emily's questions, too.
Uh, yeah, Emily and I spoke. Um, one of the concerns that I had was the $800,000 in tax appeal reserve that was closed out to revenue to reduce the deficit.
Um, Janice, if you can just speak into the mic, I'd just keep it on the record for this.
I thought I was.
No, no, I'm coming.
I got it. Um, when we, last week, we said there was a $1.7 million tax appeal reserve. Is that correct?
Slightly over $1.6 million, I was considering.
Is that after you closed out the 800,000?
Have to deduct the 800,000, which is gonna leave a little bit over 800,000.
So, the reserve will be 800,000 for tax appeals?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, does the township have any appeals outstanding in 2021 that aren't revolved?
The township does have outstanding tax appeals that are not expected to be settled this year. But in addition to that, has been the policy of the tax assessor working in coordination with some other consultants, tax appeal attorneys, not to disburse funds corresponding to tax appeals, but instead crediting the tax accounts of those individuals benefited with judgments.
What are the, do you know the total of the tax appeals for '21?
As far as I remember, it's a little over $200,000. The specific amount, I don't have it with me right now.
Do you know what the tax appeals were in 2020?
I requested a report from the tax assessor, and it is less than the $800,000 that we are anticipating as revenue for both years.
So, the only outstanding appeal right now is $200,000?
Not that specific amount. I'd have to look at the report, but I do remember that it was slightly over $600,000.
Oh, $600,000?
Yes, ma'am, for both years, 2020 and 2021.
What about the heal today?
Okay, Janice?
So, yeah, so, you know, I mean, I see a lot of empty commercial properties in town. Empty parking lots. I just read recently that there's articles that the CEOs are saying, in many cases, they're not bringing employees back. So, there's a potential for the town, I think, to see some significant tax appeals in 2022. What's your sense of that? Do you have any information about that?
I don't have information in those regards, but I have the, in my conversations with the tax assessor, he is confident that that is being managed properly. At the moment, we don't want to discuss publicly the strategy behind negotiations with tax appeals because it's not beneficial for the interest of the township, but I know it's being addressed properly.
You know, I understand that Wayne's, which Wayne is a good comparison to Parsippany, you know, I think. And it's my understanding they have about a $6 million tax appeal. I think Denville might be about $3 million. So, you know, what's the optimism in Parsippany based on? $800,000 seems exceptionally low.
I may say what happens when you settle, when you settle stipulations of the settlement of one of those large appeals is typically offset by decreasing the ratables of other properties. If you look at the properties that have been sold lately, just remember two, three articles forwarded by the tax assessor, and they were sold by market value at quite a large amount. So, just increases in ratables by those two or three properties could offset losses stemming from judgments for those other larger tax appeal spending.
What are you talking about in ratables?
Ratables is the increase in value of properties due to sales, transfers of ownership.
No, no, I'm asking how much you're anticipating.
That I cannot tell you. That should come straight up from the tax assessor, and I don't think he would know until about October 1st, when she, when he has to conduct the annual tax assessment of all properties throughout town.
Well, if you're counting on ratables to make that evaluation on the tax appeals, how do you do that?
If you look at the history of Parsippany, properties build equity essentially every year. So, it is expected that we should get some appreciation value of properties, which is the net asset valuation at the end of the year. It is expected Parsippany has quite a strong market value. It's not one of those communities that has been struggling with ratables.
Well, I mean, we don't know how much ratables we're talking about. I mean, I remember at one of our finance meetings, you talked about $26 million in ratables. That wouldn't get you close to this.
Well, if we get $26 million in 2022, that would be a windfall.
Well, that would be what? What would the town get out of that $26 million in ratables?
That would be, well, if we have, if you excuse me for a few seconds, when we finalized, introduced budget, the ratables were $7 billion, $271,600,000. And that was an increase of 20.6 million compared to 2021. If you add 2026, you'd be talking almost a little over $8 billion.
You're saying that we'll get how much in ratables?
$8 billion. That is, that is exactly. That is considering the hypothetical scenario that we get an increase of $26 million, but nothing is guaranteed when it comes to ratables.
What's the township's portion of that?
It's ratables is townwide. It applies to all of the taxing entities, with the exception of the special districts.
So, $26 million times the tax rate times .21, .26?
.26, I think, is what our tax rate is compared to school.
You know, I don't see that calculating out to that kind of...
Man, I'm trying to understand the question, because I can't figure where we're heading with that.
Well, how do you calculate the ratables? How do you calculate the...
The ratables, that's quite a, it's a tax assessor's exercise, but I'm gonna try to describe it briefly. The tax assessor takes the value. There are three different types of assessments that can be conducted in a town. That's by law. One of them is for commercial properties could be based on income, like rental properties. And, but what the tax assessors are allowed to use, for the most part, is the market value, the sales, the transactions that occur between a buyer and a seller. It's tallied at the end of the year, and that is what determines the net asset value for taxable properties. Because remember, there's also the equalized asset valuation, which is different. That one adds even railroad properties that cross through town. In this case, we're talking about only about properties that can't, that pay taxes, taxable properties. When we refer to ratables, we're referring to tax-paying properties exempt, and all of those excluded from this calculation.
Well, I was under the impression that commercial properties were assessed based on revenue, and residential properties were assessed based on market value.
To some extent, that is correct, Council President, but in some cases, the state don't allow the tax assessor to assess some of those properties based on income.
Well, why don't we...
Give me an example of that. I don't understand that.
I'm sorry.
I thought, I thought all commercial properties were taxed on revenue. And I don't understand how we can even project revenue from increased ratables in commercial property when we don't know what their sales are gonna be, what their revenue is gonna be.
Well, typically, income-based properties are just rentals. When it comes to commercial, they follow a different type of assessment, different guidelines, which is based not only on square miles, but it's based on other parameters that I cannot explain clearly because that's a tax assessor's matter. But I know it's been a subject of debate statewide whether taxing, whether assessing some of those properties based on income or based on some other parameters.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we find out what the ratables are projected for 2021?
I don't think, I don't think there's...
Well, ask, go ask for that, sure. You wanted to see one of the projected ratables for 2022?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I see a lot of these buildings are empty, and I think that there's a possibility or potential for tax appeals.
And we'll get the current rate up in there. And I think your previous question also was the current tax appeals, the status of, you know, the listing, if you will, of our current appeals.
In 2021.
Yes.
For 2021, we can find that out.
You said it's 200,000, right? Or 600,000?
600,000.
600,000 was the total amount for '21, '20, and '21.
And we have an $800,000 reserve?
Tax appeals, correct.
Right.
But again, as Juan mentioned, we very rarely, in my 20 years of doing this, have we written a check to a developer or somebody during the tax appeal process. When somebody leans into the microphone and says, you know, here's a tax appeal, by the time we agree on what that reduction in the value is in that appeal, results in a check. In the 20 years, like I've said, of doing this, this is terms of conversation where, you know, we'll spread your appeal out over a number of years so that next year, you'll have a lesser burden. In the year of that, you have a lesser burden. But I cannot think of one time in the 20 years I've been doing this where somebody actually cut a check. Maybe they do that in Parsippany a lot, but they've never done it in other places I've been.
They don't go to adjudicate it?
They do, absolutely. Part of the adjudication process is that they spread the debt over the next couple of years. For instance, like next year, okay, we owe you $200,000. We're not gonna give you a check. We're gonna reduce your taxes on this corporate property by $50,000 for the next four years. That's how you get your $200,000. You don't get a check.
Well, why don't we just find out what the ratables are?
Yeah, we can do that. We can do the projected ratables. In my conversation, like Juan's has been with Dan, he, you know, he's on these. He's very good at what he does, and he has, and to quote Don Rickles, he makes the deal. You know, he talks to these developers, he talks to these people who come and do tax appeals, and they cut a deal that spreads the load in the out years, not writing a check.
So, he would say 26, 27 million then, right?
We're talking the $26 million we're thinking about is going to be an increase in our ratable base for next year. Correct.
Okay, so we can just get that confirmed?
I will find out what the projected ratables are for 2022. Correct.
Okay, so we're not, we're just in much better shape than a town like Wayne, then, I suppose?
We are.
I would say, yes.
So, 6 million, 800?
Our population is similar to Wayne's, and we have some similarities, but we're not really there.
That much? Okay, 6 million to 800,000. All right. I guess the other question I have was the reserve for debt service. We're earning $90,000. What's left in that reserve?
That's not a reserve per se.
Oh, right. What's left in that revenue?
Uh, I may say between $10,000 and $20,000, but if I can clarify that subject, those are premiums paid by, at the bond sale.
Yeah, I know.
So, that's not a reserve per se. Just funds that go into capital fund, and we call them reserves because that's the definition from the state.
Right.
So, we don't necessarily have funds reserved as the term goes.
Yeah, I understand.
Those are premiums that are being used, anticipated as revenues can be used to offset debt service, or in this case, to be used as revenues.
Right, so they're premiums on bond sales?
Correct.
So, you anticipating that in bond sales for 2022?
That is correct. So, that amount may not be available in 2022, even though we would have likely a bond sale in October. We have to roll over some notes, have to refinance some debt service. So, we may end up having a larger amount of premium for 2022. But that's amount that we cannot count on it because it's not a reserve per se.
So, it's possible this could be a non-occurring, a non-reoccurring revenue?
That's a possibility.
Okay, let me see here. Okay, the other question I had was on the insurance. You had an overall reduction of about $1.1 million. What information is available? Do you have some studies or reports, quarterly reviews, that help you make a determination?
Yes, ma'am. I forwarded by email a little over a week ago an analysis that we keep about the self-insurance fund. That's an analytical spreadsheet that maintains all of the disbursements frequencies that we get that could benefit or could deplete funds from that reserve. At this point, the reserve is very good, and that's one of probably those, I may say, positives, if we can call it that way, from the pandemic. During the pandemic, people didn't go to the hospital, so we ended up paying a lot less. That was appropriated, then that ended up lapsing to the reserve for self-insurance. That allowed us to cut in 2021 a little bit of that reserve and anticipated that revenue to balance the 2021 budget.
So, the $1.1 million, that was determined between when the budget was presented in April and when it was presented in July?
That is correct. We're being conservative and didn't wanna touch any of those reserves. We don't wanna touch any of those unusual line items. But when it came to the point at which we just couldn't find revenues anywhere else, we needed to go to what the only items we had left. But from day one, we have been conservative, trying to come up with a good budget that made sense.
And this information was given to you by the trust officers?
Trust officers?
Of the group health insurance?
Oh, no, they don't need to give us that. We are self-insured, so that is, those are permanent analysis that we run.
Basically, you know, we pay our own bills.
We pay our own bills.
We understand that.
So, that's, we are the trust officers.
You don't do any reviews with the broker to see if we're on track for these, for these amounts?
Well, we factor that in. When we negotiated at the end of last year, the renewal of the policies, yes, there's a large amount of data that is produced. All of that is taken into consideration in order to analyze the reserves. The kind of reserve that you're referring to, it's a different kind of analysis for different purposes.
No, but I mean, you're cutting $1.1 million out of the insurance.
Correct, because we have it in reserve. Last time I checked, we had over $4 million of that. Wouldn't cause any problems there.
Well, let's hope we have a healthy year, 2022.
So far, so good. Let's knock wood, but we're doing pretty good this year, too.
I mean, you can go ahead and...
Corretta?
I had a question on the hotel tax revenue. Anticipated is $2,500,000. Do we have any figures of year-to-date as to what we have, what the township has received?
Uh, we do have, I don't have them with me right now, but last time I provided them...
Yeah, I have that.
To Councilwoman Janice was a little over a week ago. Yes, we're falling behind with those revenues, which is not unusual. That's happening nationwide. So, we're going through the same struggles at this moment that every hotel, every town that collects fees or taxes on hotels. That's why the state allowed us to use the three-year average because they knew that we wouldn't be able to make those revenues. We expect to compensate, make up the losses in those revenues and some other items.
Yes, I realize that you could take a three-year average. Other towns did the same thing, take a three-year average, but some towns were very conservative in their figure for 2021. I feel this administration took the maximum, and I'm wondering if we should have been more prudent in those calculations. Now, you're projecting $2,500,000, and we have, year-to-date, we haven't even received $400,000 yet. So, that's quite a bit of funds that we're hoping to anticipate for the hotel tax. And we all see that the buildings, parking lots are empty, and I just think this was a bit overzealous in the amount that was taken.
I agree with you, ma'am, but I have to tell you, those amounts came after days and nights of deep thoughts. And there's a point at which you just can't come up with the tax levy cap. You can't meet the levy caps. You can't meet all the requirements of the job, and you have to make a decision in terms of revenues. So, that one had to be pushed up a little bit. Had to admit to it.
Well, I mean, if that's right, if year-to-date is 356, 357?
No, we have a higher amount. I just don't have it with me right now, but we have a higher amount.
But as of, I guess that was June, that was June, it was 356?
Yeah, we should be...
Even if, even if you're a million dollars now, okay, that's still a million dollars less than what you anticipated for revenue. And what that means to me is you're not gonna, you got a million dollars in here anticipated that does not exist. You're not gonna have it in cash or in your budget at all.
From that line item, I, you're certainly correct, sir. From that line item, we may not get it, but there are some other line items of revenue that we make up for the loss in that hotel line item. That is the expectation that we have.
I haven't seen that any place in the budget where you can make that, make up a million dollars.
We can't.
I think this was just a gimmick to balance your budget, and there's no way you're gonna make this revenue.
Well, that's projecting from, I think, yes, that's projecting from July to December that you're going to make up about 83% of that revenue. I think that's a push, don't you?
Big push.
I mean, and that's a concern because that would mean we would get less revenue. And then that's a shortfall for next year.
I am not concerned about that line item of revenue, and there's another reason why. This year, the pension bills that we've received increased by $1.3 million. In 2022, we expected the pension bills to go back to normal. The largest decrease we might get is $100,000, which gives us between $1.1 and $1.2 million to our favor. Just decreasing that line item of appropriations from the pensions would offset the losses of revenues of the hotel tax. would offset the losses of revenues of the hotel taxes.
Why is that happening?
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask.
The tax bills, those have retroactive payments that occurred when there are changes to salaries, sorry, to wages. And I just came here and found that bill goes back to five or six years. I couldn't get the full explanation of it, contacted the division. They just referred us to look at tons of reports and those kind of things. Just sometimes they fall behind with their calculations to send us the bill. So most of the blame comes from the state. Send us the bill and we had to pay cold, have no choice.
So we knew about that when you projected the hotel revenue?
All of those things were considered, plenty of things when we, it's not plugging those numbers cold, ma'am. Before we come to those conclusions, lots of analysis are behind it. And we're not only thinking of the analytical part of it, we're looking, we're thinking of the humane side of the job. Thinking of the property owners that have to pay taxes and all of those kind of things. So it's a, it's quite a sensible exercise, is what I may say.
I also want to ask about the Department of Police, Department of Public Safety, the police department. The budget request is for $16,437,424. We have a total of 97 in our police force. Men, women. That's, that's the number that I was just recently given. I'm concerned about other expenses. We may have overtime and do you feel that the overtime that you've requested of 917,000 is going to be sufficient? The mayor originally wanted 852, 996. And we've increased it. We may have men and women retiring. And I know that the contract, the police contract will be coming up soon. And I'm wondering if any negotiations or any any sit downs have been done to look at their their increase in their contract. I know they had a 3.5, but I believe they're doing 1.75 for a period and then another 1.75. Have we?
So they have a 1.75 for the first six months and then another 1.75 for the next six months.
Right.
Every six months for four years. Their contract ends at the end of this year, Councilwoman, and we have not yet started formal negotiations with the police.
Okay, is there a time period when you can start negotiations?
We statutorily have to begin 90 days before the end of the contract period.
Okay.
Okay, both parties, you know, send letters and say, you know, let's start talking. Bring us your, if I use the word wishlist or your list of demands or whatever you want to call it. Then we would initially meet and start, you know, negotiate from there.
All right.
It's regards to the 16 and a half million dollar budget. I'll give Juan a break over here. So as part of our budget conversation is that we started last year in September, right about the time that I got here. Juan walked in in October. His first day here were budget conversations and that we have started in deference to Ms. Valerie's conversation. All the departments know that the, that the budget meetings are gonna start after Labor Day.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, like we did last year, about September, this is not uncommon. Unfortunately, with Juan starting late, it really put us behind the power curve. From his perspective, if he had showed up in like maybe May or June or July, probably would be so behind the power curve. Each department, to include the police department, we're putting a headlock by myself. And I asked them all to look at, you know, if I asked it to the police, not to funding the police, but I did ask them, you know, you got a 16 and a half million dollar budget. I ask you to look at this and maybe, I don't know, whack off $500,000 here or there, something like that, give us a break. And so some of these things, other than, you know, we need to watch your overtime. Overtime is a matter of management, okay, and keeping an eye on your numbers. Maybe getting rid of some of those. So some of those things that he gave up in his budget request, we're talking about the budget request from last fall, you know, what's six or eight months into the, into the conversation saying, it doesn't look like we're gonna do this. It doesn't look like we're gonna do that. I give a good example. We put money in the budget to pay for, not in the police department, but in EMS to pay for the rent of the Mount Tabor firehouse. We will pay rent to Mount Tabor, starting on a quarterly basis, once they get a CO. They don't have it yet. So I took that money for six months out of the EMS budget. That's a savings to the town. We're gonna pay them, but I'm not gonna pay them for a building I'm not in, so that was taken out of the budget. It'll be in the next year. Once we get in there, then the clock will start, 15 years, off we go. So as you go through the year and say, look, Dean doesn't need that in his budget, out. The police were the same way. We're not doing this, we didn't do that, we didn't do this, out of the budget it came. A lot of that overtime was taken out of the budget because they put it in the budget for special events that we didn't do because of COVID. So fireworks was paid for by contribution, but that would normally be in their overtime budget. So we didn't have it in there, so we took it out. We can't, I'm not gonna double count it. Paid for by deduction over here and then have it in your budget over there. So we did a whole lot of that. Some of these things that came out of here, we have police officers retiring maybe, but I haven't heard anybody yet. We're, you know, pretty stable over there. The only person that's retired, you know, Chief Miller. And we haven't promoted anybody recently.
No.
So we're waiting to see.
Doesn't some of this overtime just occur during the normal process of?
No, absolutely.
So I mean, I think that the majority of that comes from the normal operating.
Yeah, people on vacation, they're sick, calling in, you know, personal days, things like that.
Change of shifts and.
Some of that stuff, correct.
So I mean, that's, that's in the budget.
Correct, that's already in there.
How do you expect that?
Unexpected overtime.
Do you expect that to change?
No, I asked the chief to do his job and manage his budget.
Okay.
Now, side jobs, you know, sitting outside of road, doing road jobs, things like that, those go through extra duty solutions, not part, not part of budget. So we got away from doing a lot of, we got, we got away from doing that a few years ago.
So you have about $100,000 from that, right?
Of what?
Outside detail, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
That's correct.
So you're, that's covered. You're not anticipating that that will be required?
No, because we have to pay for our road jobs.
Paul, do you feel I was incorrect in the 97?
Well, I'm just looking at here, it says 99. Here, so I mean, there are 99 positions in the budget.
Yeah.
So if we are down to 97, I mean, the budget includes.
Handy left?
For 99.
No, based on, so that was back in, so that's your date from, remember Chief Miller retired?
Yes.
But he's still in there? We're still counting him in the budget?
Yes.
Because he's paying him out?
Right. Right, the other thing, too, is, I think you had brought it up in the past, is with that new legislation now, even though we are a civil service department, civil service towns do not have to use their civil service list.
Correct.
And can just hire someone that is police training commission certified, PTC certified. So in other words, you know, we happen to be one of the better paying departments in the county in the area and you may have, you're probably going to have officers from other towns wanting to come here. So you save on training, they don't have to go through the police academy. You basically, once you get them trained for policy and procedures of Precipity Police Department, they're ready to go on the road. So there is a, is a cost savings there that will definitely be a substantial. You won't have to pay for the academy, academy equipment, they'll already be certified.
So because we pay higher than just about any other town?
Well, not just about any other town. You know, our other towns that pay more, but.
Not a lot.
There are one of them.
Not a lot.
At least in the top two.
But we, we recently.
We have the benefit from that.
We recently received a letter on a hiring freeze. Was that just for administration, not for police?
The chief lets, lets something, lets you know something, I know the last time I talked to Rich Pantina, which was last week, he didn't say anything about needing to hire anybody this year.
Okay.
And that's what I'm talking about. I also read the counter article, Councilman, that the the urban towns are worried about being snaked by.
They're worried about everybody leaving.
By being snaked by people like Morristown as we work on our diversity.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yes, they are, they are.
So I would be, I would be worried, too, if I was Patterson or somebody like that, right? Spend all this time and effort training a guy and then have him bail on. We had that problem in Port Amboy, everybody wanted to work at the prosecutor's office. They paid more, they didn't work as hard. Just the way that. So, but no, we haven't, we don't have any, so, you know, I'm hoping to have with all the departments the conversation starting in the fall with an expected retirements, you know. For instance, I did have a hiring freeze, okay, but I had to hire two building inspectors. I had three. Now I had one. And I gotta replace those because I'd rather not, but if everybody would like to wait, I don't know, three months for a building inspection, then that's not gonna work.
No, because that's gonna hurt revenue.
It's gonna hurt revenue, actually. And the phones are gonna light up.
Also, there was a, a job opening or a request for a clerk. Is that not part of the?
Public Works?
Yeah, that's not part of the hiring freeze?
Let's, we're looking at the reorganization of Public Works. When, remember from months ago, we, with Greg leaving and retiring, Jim taking over, Marge being promoted to the Assistant Public Works Director. There's now vacancy to do the clerical work. If I have Marge out putting everybody in a headlock at Public Works, I still need somebody to do the paperwork.
I see.
That's part of the reorganization, 35,000.
35?
That's the low end of the, that's, that's where we hire entry-level clerks at right now.
Okay, thank you.
So this public works reorganization, there was no benefit to consolidation?
Well, what the, so, so our benefit is comes that we have much better management over there. Greg was trying to do it all alone.
No, I mean in, in staff.
So we've got our, we have some, from our budget that was introduced and recommended back in April to now, we've probably reduced half a dozen positions in parks and recreation and in public works.
From the reorganization?
From, from, from the reorganization where we've made some management choices and saying, we're not gonna hire this laborer, this tree cutter in these, these positions and we're gonna use that money to do something else, like hire this clerk to do the paperwork.
And are we hiring from within or no?
Predominantly, yes.
Okay.
We open it up to within, so this year, if you remember the large spreadsheet I sent out a couple of months ago, the question was asked, most of those positions, we did, many of those were within, were in-house. But then again, you get to a point where you're looking for a specific job skills. For instance, we had some great qualified applicants to go to the water department, but I was looking, we needed somebody with a little bit of an accounting degree to help them with the, to use the word the math, over there in the water utility. And we brought an outside person in who could actually come from a financial firm.
Okay, thank you. Mike, those are the questions I had.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Actually, Loretta asked the one question that I had referenced at a hotel tax. Fred and Juan, would it be possible, because I, I know, you know, we could, we all have questions about, you know, the anticipated revenue and if, how we're gonna get there, what you guys are projecting and everything like that. Could we get, and I don't know if that's gonna be too burdensome or not, like maybe every month, let's just say you've anticipated $12,000 for the year of a certain type of revenue. So that would break down to about $1,000 a month. I'll just use that as an example. Could we get a report that would say, okay, as of June 30th, which would, would have been, you know, halfway through the year, I'm just using that as a scale. If we were at $6,000 in revenue for that particular line item, we're on pace for the 12,000 for the year. So it would just kind of give us an idea of like, you know, if you're saying you're anticipating we're gonna have these revenues, you know, we're gonna be getting there as we're starting to get towards the end of the year, going into next year. Is that something that's possible where we could see that, hey, we are on pace, we're actually doing better than we thought or we're falling further behind?
We already got that.
No, I, I know, but I mean, is that something on a regular basis that we could?
Yes, definitely, we can produce a revenue report, monthly revenue report. However, the first part of the question that you're referring to, that's a revenue forecast. The revenue forecast cannot be projected until the budget is adapted because, because of intricacies of the system, the software that we have, we have to post the budget as adapted and then take it from there and bring the forecast. Until the budget is adapted that we can post all of those revenues, it's, it's, numbers you get may not be that reliable. Now, the revenues, while we received, yes, we can produce that report on a monthly basis.
We actually have enough based on the budget.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, you know, this way we kind of, as we're going along, we're not all of a sudden, you know, way behind or.
Driving blind.
We can say, hey, we are actually doing a little bit better than we thought or, you know, so going into that will have some kind of an idea. Anything that, you know.
Yeah, we could, we could do that. What we don't want to do is we don't want to compare the, the revenues projected in the budget of an unadopted budget with the, the real math coming in.
Right.
Until we put it in there, because then there'll be a disparity.
Right.
I mean, if you look at your budget with regards to over expended budget lines, I'll bet you, you know, not, not bet you. Right now, there are budget lines in the budget that have been expended by 100%.
Right.
Because insurance payments and things like that, pension payments are due upfront.
Yes.
You know, there's not 12 pension payments a year on a monthly basis. State doesn't work that. They sent us a letter in, in January and said, your check's late.
I, I know there's gonna be some things that we're not gonna be able to have an idea, but I mean, anything that we could, I think would help. Thank you.
When you were just, you thought, you think there's gonna be a lot of retirements and pension payouts then in the police force?
No, I didn't, I had no knowledge of that.
I thought you said you're anticipating retirement.
Well, we always, we always have that. That's part of the budget process. When people come in and they say, for instance, I knew which, I knew that Greg Schneider was leaving Public Works. I knew that there were a couple of senior people in Public Works that were retiring this year. Okay, so that's all part of the budget, say, you know, he's leaving, we're gonna replace him with this person. Same thing in a police department. You know, right now, for instance, the civil service list for sergeant and lieutenant expires next year. They called for a new test, our officers, well, not for sergeants yet. But, you know, there is an anticipation for a new list and perhaps some lieutenants are gonna retire, a captain's gonna retire. We don't know what's gonna happen, but you have to prepare for that. And the chief would have a knowledge of, you know, what sergeant's getting ready to retire at 25 years and when that day is or not. I don't have that right now, but again, that's part of the conversation that we have in all the departments in, in the fall. We anticipate that.
Are you done, Paul?
Yes, thank you.
One of the things that always been sticking to my throat was the old police contracts where they accrued accrued sick leave and vacation days would come out to 300,000, 350,000 dollars. That was, that was stopped and limited to $15,000, I believe. They can't accrue it for 30 years like they used to do. I was just wondering, how many police officers do we have that are grandfathers that still are gonna get the accrued sick leave and vacation days? We, we gotta be nearing, that number's gotta be getting smaller now to, when does it disappear? I know you won't have that answer with you.
No, no, I don't, believe it or not, I don't happen to have that with me.
I didn't think so, but it's something I would like to know.
We could do that.
I like to know when that ends.
More than, I'd give you an answer, more than should be would be my answer. You see Paul's head exploding down there?
But yes, with the cap.
We'll find out, we'll find out, we'll see how many are left with the book checking.
Yeah, you don't have to mention names, just give me a quantity. How many are left that are gonna get their accrued sick leave and vacation days in the multi-hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Should be getting smaller every year.
Should be, but we'll, we'll, we'll tell you that then.
Yeah, I'd like to know what it is, though, and, or some kind of a projected date when we, we finish that.
Well, the only thing that's tough about that is you may have somebody stays for 35 years.
Or stays longer. Okay, so it's an estimate. I'm looking for.
But, but we can tell you who is still out there, who's on the force right now, who is grandfathered in. Right. A number greater than 15K.
Right, yes, that's, okay, that's a better way to ask the question. Thank you. Now, we talked a lot about revenue. I still have a concern about the hotel tax anticipated revenue. I'm not sure we're gonna make that up, but we'll wait and see. On the expense side, we talked too much about expenses. How much of a, of an increase in township fuel is in the budget? I couldn't find, and it's spread over different departments, though. But, but there's a number, you know, how, how much did we increase township fuel costs? We all know that the gas, the price of gasoline is going up every week.
Yes.
It'll be over $5 by, by the end of the year, I think.
Don't say that.
That is the utilities. The utilities is one of those areas that was cut as part of the two, almost 2.5 million dollars caught in appropriations. caught in appropriations to finalize this budget. That was, that was part of the last conversations we had. And I, and I'm shooting from top of my head. All of those utilities, Fred.
Why, why are you just talking about utilities?
Because it's.
Because it's part of the utilities.
So we're talking about gas, we're talking about gasoline, natural gas, electricity, it's all in the same budget, but it's not across.
One line item in the budget. Even though we break it up.
Well, that's why I couldn't find it then.
Probably it is under utilities or bulk purchases. That's the header, which is a, a language from the state, uh, nomenclature.
Okay. How much did we put in there for an increase?
We didn't, we put it, we, we, we took.
The same as last year, right?
It was essentially the same as last year.
And you know, that's not gonna happen. So there's, there's one place where we can anticipate a shortfall before the end of the year. How about, how about tipping fees, uh, at the trash transfer station?
Tipping fees is the same as last year.
That's what I'm afraid of. That also is gonna, is gonna be a shortfall.
That is one of those costs that we had to make, as I indicated.
How about hauling sludge? You know, the, uh, uh, this is the sewer treatment plant, but, uh, we haul all of our sludge to a landfill in Pennsylvania. Gas prices going up and their salaries going up. Um, you didn't put an increase in, in that fee either. So all these, all these expenses are underestimated and they're gonna come back and bite us. And we talked about salary negotiations for the police. What about the other, uh, employee contracts?
So, blue collar, blue collar doesn't end till next year.
Okay.
So blue collar ends at the end of '22. Blue collar supervisors ended at '22.
White collar?
White collar doesn't have a contract. They're in the, they're in the, um, the salary, the white collar salary ordinance, which is on tomorrow night's agenda for first introduction, which is 2%.
2%.
Uh, the changes, the changes, the changes in the white collar that was sent to, uh, there are some changes where people in positions have topped out. And that's where those changes in the, in the guide, where those, those ranges were moved because people in those positions have hit the, hit the max. So we gotta move, we remove the I-bar.
Was that the, um, was that the list that we recently received?
Yes. Two lists, there were two lists. There was one list some months ago, uh, that Councilman Karys asked for with regards to who had been hired recently. That was a big long list. And then maybe within the last month, there was another spreadsheet that came out that showed the white collar pay raises, if you will, not pay raises, but the.
Their ranges.
The ranges, correct, the ranges, correct.
Gave their, gave their, um, positions.
Correct.
And what their ranges were.
We changed the ranges because there are a number of white collar employees who have maxed out of their range, correct.
Should we be approving that?
Yeah, um, I'm just wondering, how, how can we, I, I believe that's going to be on the agenda for this, for this next meeting.
Correct.
How can we possibly approve something like that if we haven't approved our budget?
We haven't approved it. It's all contingent on the budget.
It's all gonna be contingent on the budget.
It's all contingent on the budget, correctly. So tomorrow night on the council agenda, if you will, there's the white collar, the, the white collar salary ordinance. Plus three capital ordinances, one for the water, water utility, one for the golf utility, and one for general capital improvements, of which we have allocated about $6 million in the township, of which 2 million goes to the library. Okay? So those are all part of our budget conversation and they're all tied together. Uh, because of the lateness of our introduction, uh, and the whole budget cycle, I've put them on, if you'll look at the ordinances that Collette forwarded tomorrow, today, they're on an abbreviated or accelerated schedule. So instead of traditionally introducing it on one month and then adopting it on a second month, we're introducing it at one meeting, adopting it hopefully on the second meeting. This allows for the estoppel period to run concurrent with our time period for budget adoption. Just from the math standpoint, from an engineering standpoint, if, if we don't pass the ordinance and we, and we don't have a budget in pass, then we're gonna, there'll be no roads fixed this year. Because come November, is road, you know, that's really not road fixing time in Persippany or anywhere north of, you know, where it's cold. Can't do much asphalting in the winter.
You know, about the, the capital improvement budget, you cut about half of the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, my question is, how do you anticipate ever getting back on track with the capital improvement? I mean, this is a tight budget.
Absolutely.
No question about it. And, and.
No doubt, no doubt.
As, as has been discussed and as our auditor pointed out, it's not a financially sustainable budget. So how are we gonna get back on track with the capital improvement project?
Well, I think that, uh, we could probably caveat on the fact that the last three budgets weren't sustainable either because you use 2, 2 million plus and change on the water sewer knowing that pretty soon we're gonna run out of money. So, you know, we wrote checks, wrote checks and wrote checks, and then now we're out of checks.
Well, yeah.
So the answer is, I don't know what's gonna happen in the out years. Uh, the math of it is, the hard decisions made by me and Juan this year is that to get to that number, I leaned into the microphone and I talked to guys like Justin and said, you wanna write, your, your capital list wants $6 million in asphalt. You get 1.4. You figure it out, what's, who's winning and who's losing. That's your job.
Yeah, they do, they'll do the priority, they'll.
He's got a list, he's got absolutely a list of worst to best. And the same thing with, with, uh, tipping fees. We put $2 million in the tipping fees. That's what Greg wanted. Uh, and I cut it by $50,000. Okay, because I gotta, I've got a whack across the board to try to get to that number.
Yeah, I agree.
There is no single, there is no single silver bullet, there is no panacea. It's everybody's feeling the pain from soup to nuts.
Yeah.
Now, let me talk about white collar. Okay? All right? Last year during the pandemic, everybody came to work. Okay, and as I told the department heads, and as I called the division heads, you're not going to Atlantic City. That's why I took it out of the budget. You're not going there. If you wanna go there, like Fred's gonna go there, get a rubber duck, but I'm taking a personal day and I paid my own 50 bucks, 60 bucks. Okay?
Yeah, I took, I took a personal day too.
Yeah, because I'm not gonna fund, I'm not gonna fund somebody's, I'm not gonna fund somebody's weekday down Atlantic City at the Bellagio and then not give them a 2% pay raise because they'll say, gee, that was exciting. I'm glad the planning board went to Atlantic City and I didn't get my 2% after working all day last year during the pandemic. Our, you know, our people are almost.
The 2% was, was not a problem.
Yeah.
The thing I had a problem with was the, the bonuses that were given out. $120,000.
So, so those were, those were the makeup from, uh, if you will, that some of the, some of the, last year, there was the catch-up, if you will, from the Grace Kelly. And then some of those were that. And then there were others where people have had just considerably reduced, um, in, in the, as I gave to the council, considerably increased responsibilities. I mean, they've gone off and got their certification in, in their, in their job performance and they're doing a lot of work. So trying to bring, you know, did the, in my job is always trying to bring people up to a reasonable parity so we don't lose them. I mean, most of our attrition down in construction was we're not paying enough and people took better jobs and left. After training them to be down in construction, there was just an immense bleeding going on down there because they, at the first opportunity for a better job, they left, which.
Okay.
We all understand that.
Legal fees. Do we, do we make our attorneys to take a salary cut?
I quit calling Jim Long.
We could have balanced the budget with legal fees.
I just quit calling him for routine stuff. Juan and I make it up on our own so he doesn't bill us. And then I also reduced the number of attorneys on the call. I don't need five guys on the call, one's enough.
I still am concerned about the, when we catch up on, I mean, it's fine to do all those things and, you know, not have people pay for their own.
I'm concerned too.
But I mean, I just see.
You, you are absolutely correct.
I just see that these, these projects are piling up on one another.
They are, absolutely.
You know, I mean, 2021 moves into 2022, so on and so on. And there's going to be a situation where more needs to be done because it isn't being done. That's my concern. And I just have one more item. We gotta.
And I will say that, that my conversation with, with Justin, let's talk about asphalt, as an engineer, I will tell you that I know what it costs to fix a road.
You said asphalt, right?
Asphalt, which is roads, right? That's absolutely. Okay, okay, McCadham.
No, 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 no. I thought you said something else with that.
No, I didn't.
Okay. No, that's other people that say that. Go ahead.
Maybe. So I, I know that the, when you kick the can down the road, it gets worse.
That's right.
But the problem is you have no choice.
I know, it's unfortunate that we're at that point.
This deferred maintenance, uh, in that, I mean, we have $12 million in the water utility because we kicked the can down the road for so long. You know, right now with the scarce water resources that we have, older, you know, John, as he said here, you know, two weeks ago, I've gotta fix these wells and do these improvements or we're in trouble.
Uh, the other item that I couldn't pick out on the budget is the pension and benefit costs. I hope we didn't pinch on, on that area.
That's, no, the, 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 the pension bill is the pension bill. We, we have to pay that. We can't underestimate that.
So that's a fixed number?
That is a fixed number, correct.
That's a fixed number.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely a fixed number.
Okay, how about increasing benefit costs?
So increasing benefits for like pensions or increasing benefits for?
Well, we're self-funded, so I know it's not those, it's not those benefits. Um, I'm not sure what I mean. I was looking for benefit costs. Social Security is fixed too, right?
Yes. So for every hundred dollars, we pay 7.65% in payroll costs.
Correct. It increases with the payroll.
Right.
Okay.
So, and in that more, and the more, for instance, in our healthcare contributions, the more the employee makes, the more their contribution is, uh, with regards to that. I will say that as part of this process and since, you know, we've done some effort in reducing our healthcare costs, we have initiated a pretty significant scrub of our, of our data listing, uh, and have found a number of people collecting benefits that should not and were taking steps to ensure that they are following the contract. There'll be, you know, obviously some pain involved, but I, I don't know, call me crazy, Councilman, but I think if the person is dead, we shouldn't be paying the healthcare cost. Just my, just my opinion.
I hope we haven't been doing that long.
Just a couple of years.
Couple of years?
Right. It gives me great comfort to know that Juan and Fred are practicing law.
Without a license.
They were trying to reduce our legal fees, Jim.
But that's okay, I understand that. Um, just with respect to, uh, fixed expenses, um, some of your deals for motor fuel, sludge, and, um, tipping fees are already set by contract. Uh, we'd have to talk to Mike Hardy to figure out whether or not any of those contracts, those contracts are typically multi-year deals. And we'd have to take a look with Mike Hardy to see whether or not those, those contracts.
I believe they have, um, have escalators or not. Escalators built into them.
Right, yeah.
That's what I'm concerned about.
So we, we've done, we did all that last year and this year. So when we talk about, you know, we're on contract to buy so much fuel and how much it costs, and we estimate across all the departments. And then at the end of the day, it's just one gas bill for the town. One electric bill for the town.
I, I know, but the contracts usually have an escalating clause in them.
That's, it could go up, but we're talking about budgeting the amount of money in there and telling the department heads, you know, watch your money.
Right, so the expense is more or less fixed by contract already, subject to whatever the escalator may or may not be on the deal. Uh, one other thing to be mindful of.
But we don't have any, but I don't know that we have any reserve in there for any of those escalators.
Right, so we, we'd have to talk to Mike to figure out what escalators may or may not have been tripped. Just one thing to be mindful of with respect to fuel cost, you really can't use the pump price as an accurate comparison because we don't pay any, any tax on it.
Correct. We had this conversation with Mike in those two regards and that's how we came up with those numbers.
Right.
So the conversation we had, not less than three times, trying to come up with the right assessment.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question about the federal stimulus money that we received, 2.7 million. And that was used to, uh, reduce the deficit, right? We pulled, we, we, that's revenue.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's a one-time revenue, right?
I may say yes, uh, even though we just got 50% of the trench, the first trench. Next year, we're gonna get the same amount.
You know, next year, it was my understanding that we committed to use that 2.7 to pay the 2.3 million dollars.
That we allowed you to borrow it.
A portion of, a portion of that will be amortized in the debt. It's a five-years note, it's amortized in five years. So yes, we're gonna pay a fifth of the note with some of those, the proceeds of those funds next year.
So part of the 2.7 million next year.
Correct.
It's only, we're only paying a fifth of that with the.
Valerie, let me ask that question. Valerie, have we heard anything from DCA with regards to paying back, uh, these notes? And the reason I ask Valerie that, and I'll give you a chance to think, in a post-Sandy environment, okay, post-Sandy, DCA, after FEMA started kicking the money back, leaned into the microphone and said, hey, you guys cannot take the money that you're getting from FEMA and restore it to those budget lines that you took it from. You have to use it to pay down your debt. Which, you know, you know, which is where we got the money from in the first place, but they got involved in, you know, if you will, to the, you know, later on in the game, once FEMA started sending in the money. And, you know, they, they made, also next year, because it took them a little while to figure out what to do with the money this year, leaned into the microphone and say, you need to take the entire second portion of your American Rescue Plan money, use it totally for your bu, the budget, or you can use it as revenue like they did this year, or can you amortize your debt? We don't know. So our intent is, yes, council directed that we use 2.7 to pay off the 2.3. We will do that based on council's special wishes if we're allowed. We haven't got that far.
But if we pay a fifth, that's a half a million dollars, just about.
Correct.
Correct.
So that's about a half a million dollars in revenue shortfall.
No.
Yeah, 2.7.
Minus 500,000 is, we pay a fifth, that means we have 2.2 million dollars extra.
2.2 million dollars, right.
2.7.
Yeah.
But you're saying you still have a shortfall in revenue.
Based on just that one number, correct. But as we know, the, our revenue projections, our revenue sheet's about three pages of information.[1597.74]
Yeah. You know, personally, I think, I think they're very optimistic, your projections. But we'll see. You know, I think there's gonna be some, you know, I think by not approving the 1.1 million dollars that was proposed, that you have more fund balance for operating expenses and you've got an increase in revenue, and I'm sure it's not enough to cover what's gonna happen in 2022, but.
Yeah, we prevented some of the can from being kicked, kicked down the road, but there's still gonna, there's gonna be some others that we're concerned about next year.
Well, between, you know, the revenue that we have some issues with or the possibility that are gonna be a shortfall, plus some of the expenses.
Now, on the shortfalls, what, what are you gonna be doing? Asking for emergency appropriations where you have shortfalls? To get those to December 31st?
We're talking about temporary emergency appropriations. I'm in the temporary budget. Yes, we worked the resolution which is introduced to council. It's gonna be introduced to council tomorrow.
No, not, not that.
No, we're talking about, we're talking about at the end of the year.
I'm talking about when we adopt the budget.
They run out of money.
And you run out of money in some of these categories before the end of the year.
We don't expect that happening unless something unforeseeable occur. The projections of the budget is trying to minimize the impact of potential emergency authorizations in those regards.
Would you, would you, would the administration consider a spending freeze? If we have shortfalls?
In what?
In our revenue.
Yes, absolutely, but, you know, I'm still statutorily obligated to pay the bills. I would love to not pay the school.
Well, that's, that, that's another story.
I'm just saying, I mean, I got, write this down, we're gonna write down a note tomorrow and say, "We're freezing your check."
Right. And, and would you also consider furloughs?
Yes, we could, but the problem is, let's do the math. It's August. Furloughs are negotiated in the state of New Jersey in a civil service community. Unless I do white, but next year, again. So if I do furloughs for white collars or blue collars or police, I'd have to negotiate that. I'd have to come up with a number. This year it wouldn't happen, but next year.
Next year.
By the time I got the process doing. So, they'll just say that on the 1st of January, I walked in with a furlough plan. Okay, and say I'm gonna furlough X amount of people. It would be at least four months before the first person would be out the door.
Okay.
And that traditionally would be, and that traditionally would be, by the time everybody gets bumping, maybe you're the most lowest-paid person. If you just looked at, in the town here, when the debt settled, so a clerk making $36,000 would be bumped out the door four, four months into the year. You'd save about 24 grand. Plus, plus pension and payments and things like that, so maybe 30 grand. It would be your total salary. Now, if I were to lay off a whole lot of cops, I could save a lot of money, but they'd have a heart attack.
That's, that's the earliest.
Earliest, earliest.
Earliest that you could, you could do it for a lot.
Rather than having to lay people off.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna lay off.
No.
You know, when we have retirements or something, we just don't replace people.
Correct.
So this way, we're not, I don't wanna lay anybody off.
No, we're, I'm not a big fan of layoffs and the guys who get furloughed all the time are the ones who, who really, you know, the work doesn't get done. The work doesn't get done. And the state of New Jersey did that a few years ago, councilwoman, where they, where they furloughed a whole slew of state employees. Uh, and then so, the incentive to come to work and do a real good job sort of went out the door cuz, you know, one day, a pay period, you were sent home and didn't get paid.
Right.
And then, by the way, so when you did come to work the other nine days, they, they laid off the other person in your office. You know, you had like a milk crate at the end of your desk at DEP. Some of these guys never caught up.
I mean, I.
So we're, we're intending to protect our employees.
I would hope before, I mean, you know, not that it's a lot of money, but I see in the budget here, there's, you know, a thing for a line item for chairs that are 12 years old. You know what? Keep the chairs for 13th year before we have to lay somebody off. You know, I mean, that's, that's my opinion.
I'm sure there'll be line items that will be looked at and decisions to be made not to furlough people. I don't think any one of us want to.
No, no, we're not, so our conversation is, is to protect, my conversation with the mayor, council, council is, look, our most valuable asset is our people. You can save a lot of money by getting rid of your people, but you don't get any work done and that makes us, makes us look bad cuz all it's gonna do is bring a thousand people to that microphone saying, "What the heck's going on?"
Absolutely.
Right.
All right, one last question from me. The SROs.
Correct.
We're a couple of weeks away from school opening.
Correct.
We have not reached an agreement with the school board.
But they'll be in the, they'll be in the school anyway, we just, the, the SRO is gonna be there. The class threes will be there. We're just arguing about who's paying the tab.
Well, the, the SROs, the two SROs and the two high schools and the two junior highs are not class threes.
Correct, I mean, we have the, but I'm talking about the, so the four SROs will be in school on the 1st of.
Even if we haven't reached an agreement yet?
Correct, absolutely. Now, no, no debate in, in our mind that we would ever not have them there unless the school doesn't have them.
Okay.
And I have this topic on for closed session for tomorrow. And I also did receive a message from the school board attorney this afternoon before the meeting. I'll be able to update council on that at tomorrow night's closed session.
Okay, good. Anybody else have any questions?
Nope. The, uh, the division has backed off on forcing you to utilize the debt of the emergency, but they're leaving it up to the towns to decide if you want to. So if you get your second tranche.
So, so can you just say that on the record? That's an important statement.
So, yeah, so the state has backed off of their requirement for you to utilize the federal funds to pay down the debt. They had tried, several towns fought them on it and they've rescinded that mandate, but they are encouraging people and encouraging towns that if you want to use your second tranche to pay off any emergencies, it's within your authority to do so. But they're leaving it up to you, it won't be a mandate from them. Where in previous years during, it was a mandate, it won't be a mandate because of the way the federal funding is coming in through the stimulus act, it doesn't make, doesn't afford for it in the stimulus act, so they've backed off on it.
Right, there's an interesting legal question.
It was an interesting legal question that did come up. So they're not saying you can't do it, you'll bring it in as revenue and you could fund the whole 2.3 million next year or you could bring it in and do one-fifth, neither of them will be.
Which is, which is gonna be my next question is, why aren't we paying off the whole 2.3 million with that?
Yeah, that's really a budget for next year question.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Rather than the fifth.
The fifth, I mean, that's really, it's really a decision for you all, but I just wanted to give you the facts.
Thank you, thank you, Valerie. But I just wanna understand financially why it would be beneficial to spread that out over five years and not, we got the money to pay off the whole debt.
Nope, we don't, Council President. It is incumbent upon the state of our finances, we would not have enough revenue in 2022 in order to use the second tranche of those funds just to pay off debt. We didn't use a portion of that.
So you wanna use the biggest portion of that money to balance your budget next year?
We would need the revenue, sir, unfortunately.
So, well, then that's not, then that's not your intention to pay off the debt with that money, which is the expressed opinion of the whole council.
So.
The entire council said.
I think, I think right now, Council President, we should focus on this year's budget and that next year, if I could forecast what we were gonna do next year or what our budget would look like at this certainty next year, I wouldn't be in this job.
But, but.
But if you see, desire, desire of the councils to pay it off.
That was the only reason we voted to give you the 2.0, the town, 2.3 million.
Correct.
Was it gonna be paid off in full by that, by that money.
So the council has also expressed for the last hour their concerns with its budget. Okay, and that we've made these draconian cuts. I asked the council this. If you were in my chair, where, what revenues would you come up with and what cuts would you have made that I made? And my answer, I will bet you, is that you would've done the same thing cuz we had no answer on the questions that the council has, which are good questions that Juan and I have flogged ourselves considerably over the last nine or 10 months. We have the exact same concerns. What do we do next year? And the answer is, I don't know.
The other concern I have about next year is, you know, this is a deficit budget. We have not built any fund balance in this budget at all.
There wasn't any fund, there wasn't any fund balance going in, you're correct.
And we won't have any going out either.
And there hasn't been one for three years.
But we will have fund balance in 2022. In 2021, we are anticipating as revenue, simple, from fund balance. The note was issued to pay off a deficit, an operational deficit from 2021. That is the purpose of the note. And in 2022, we will have fund balance. My estimations as of right now, close to $5 million. Isolating some of the factors that might benefit us, that's the projections that we're making. So that should ease out a little bit, the budget of 2022 compared to 2021.
All right, I hope you're right.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Can I make one more observation about property tax appeals? I don't represent the township in property tax appeal matters. We have special counsel who I do speak to regularly, that's Rich DeAngelis Conifoli and I had planned on bringing him into council in the fall just to give kind of a status report as to what appeals we have. As the administrator indicated, we don't have a whole lot of appeals pending. And we can talk more about those in closed session when we bring Mr. DeAngelis and the assessor in. I will note that, you know, council approves every litigation tax settlement, all right? You don't see very many on the agenda. You'll ask yourself, "Why is that?"
They're not settled.
They're, they're, no, no, because you, you approve settlements also, okay? You're, you know, you, you have a, a very aggressive and skilled assessor here, all right? Who minimizes, all right, the, the number of litigated claims that we have, all right? And he does that very prudently because he manages his book well, meaning that he pays careful attention to what's happening in the market, all right? And he makes sure he gets income and expense statements from every commercial property owner, all right? That's a proactive measure, all right? That reduces the number of litigated claims that we have on the tax side and, you know, the assessor can explain to you more in detail exactly what he does. And, you know, in, in those cases where, where we do get a, a claim filed, right? We aggressively defend those. We're often able to send people away with zero because he has the, the data, he understands the market, he has the income and expense statements, he can justify his valuation, all right? In those cases where we have a problem, all right? He's probably already made a change for future years, you know, to recognize some change in value on the property. And again, we, we can talk more about the details of individual, you know, litigated claims and, and the current status in, in closed session cuz we don't wanna compromise our position in any ongoing litigation. Uh, but, you know, your, your assessor here and your, and your special counsel and tax attorney are very much on top of, all right, the property tax appeals. And I would caution that, you know, when you talk about other communities, all right? And I know Wayne is, in many instances, all right, it, it is similar to Precipiny in terms of population and in terms of land area, but the real estate markets are very different, all right? Each property is unique, there are no two identical properties and the market conditions between Morris County and Passaic County are also different. So you have to be careful when you wanna compare ourselves to other communities.
So, you know, somebody like Denville who has like 3 million, that would be.
Well, again, the, the market, the market in Denville is, is very, very different than it is in Precipiny, you know, as are the properties.
Well, then, you know.
I mean, we have much, we have much larger commercial office areas than Denville does.
Right, so I would be interested if our tax assessor thinks that $800,000 is a sufficient reserve.
That's, you know, it's, that's an appropriate question for him and as I said, I, I think we should bring him in and we should answer the questions. So that identified tonight.
I would be surprised if he thought $800,000 was a good reserve.
But the, the answer that I heard from Fred and Juan, and I wanna put, you know, I wanna put words in your mouth, is, is that that question's already been vetted with the assessor and I think he's okay with it.
For 2021.
For 21, correct.
But the reserve is the $800,000.
Right, but the bulk of your appeals in 21 have already been filed. The only appeals that can be filed for the remainder of 21 are the, are the ones on added assessments.
Right, so there's nothing now that's being adjudicated, other, there's nothing?
We, we, I think we need to talk to.
We're gonna, we're gonna find out, we're gonna give you, we're gonna give you the list. But before we could take the money away, you know, we had to get certification from Dan that it was okay.
For 2021.
Correct, for 2022.
Not my issue, my issue is, is the reserve sufficient for any appeals that we might incur in 2022? As I said, I see a lot of empty buildings and a lot of potential for tax appeals. So we'll just ask the tax assessor how comfortable he is.
Right, so, so you, you won't know your exposure in 2022 until the time for appeal has been, uh, uh, started for, for 22, which is, which is typically April 1st, all right? You, you, you have the 21 appeals that are pending and you have some prior year appeals also that have not, that have not been adjudicated. And I think the question that Fred wants to answer is, let's get a handle for council on exactly what are those pending appeals? But the, initially what I heard was that the assessor's been consulting on this and he believes that the reduction is appropriate. I don't wanna put words in anyone's mouth, but that's, that was my understanding.
Yeah, I understand that as well. I understand that he said that for 2021.
For 21, but, but for 22, all right? We're gonna have to make a decision in 22 about what our potential exposure will be in 22. Those appeals have not yet been filed.
Exactly, but my point is, there needs to be a reserve. What do you do if we have, we get hit with several appeals in 2022 and we have an $800,000 reserve?
Right, so, I mean, you know, the property tax appeal litigation, all right, seldom gets resolved in one year, all right? So if you're gonna have one appeal in 22, you're probably gonna, the case is probably not gonna be adjudicated until 2023, 2024 at the earliest, all right? And we, we have prior year appeals that go back five or six years.
Well, okay, so my point is, I think we should ask the assessor if he's comfortable with an $800,000 reserve.
Absolutely.
I'd be surprised if he was, but maybe he will.
Just my experience, just knowing Dan, I mean, he's always prepared.
He's sharp.
I'm sure he's done his research and he's projected out, but we'll get those answers. But just knowing him since the time I've been here, I mean, he's always seems to be right on and.
He's one of the sharpest tax assessors in New Jersey.
Absolutely, I mean, he, you know, he, he manages an, an incredible book here, all right? He's got an encyclopedic knowledge of every property in the township.
Yeah, I agree.
And he really, he really stays on top.